Okay, it's six o'clock. We'll call the order with the flag of allegiance, please.
Flag allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so I'm just gonna do a quick housekeeping note before we even start because there's Zoom and people are listening on. If people could not talk in the audience, that would be greatly appreciated so everybody can hear and understand what's going on. So, moving right along, review and approve the agenda. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Minutes of June 28th, 2021. Make a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Minutes of the 28th, it's a special meeting minute.
Move to approve the minutes as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Carries. Meeting minutes of July 6th. Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. Next is the traffic and parking public meeting. So there is one page of adjustments to our parking ordinance. And open for discussion.
Does anyone need a copy of it?
Uh, you should have changed from what's on your account website. Do you have copies?
Overwhelmed with copies.
It's okay, Stan, we got it.
You got it, Stan.
Sorry. Give a few minutes for people to review a bit. Those are the only changes to the ordinance.
Because there are no changes from what is on the website, correct?
I don't know that either.
Are you talking about in meeting minutes, like what we?
No, no, there is the warning.
Ordinance.
During.
Yes. Oh, okay, yes.
No changes to that.
Correct. Okay, so to my understanding, there there was parking on yours, but you're, we're gonna ask you to have your customers', parents' go in on, it's not pine, right? It's a and come around that way, so you're facing the right direction, please. And leaving that way, instead of coming up this way and going in. Just to ask them to come around that way, that will relieve some of the traffic issue that's there. Okay, go ahead.
So I'm just curious, does that suit you, what is the reasoning behind it? Like, why do we need to have a parking ordinance between High Street and School Street? A lot of us who live in that area don't see a problem.
It's a problem at certain parts of the day, when the school, mostly it's in the afternoon, when the school is released.
Who's, you know who's having problems, like, do we talk to all the neighbors in that area?
It's not just people who live there, it's people who are trying to drive there and the children crossing. There are other things, and I've also spoken with the school about perhaps staggering and continue to staggering their dismissal. I'm still talking to Christie about trying to come up with better solutions for that.
The fire chief said that he couldn't get a fire truck up there, that when school was being cut out, or an ambulance.
But, but once again, I mean, my complaint is, why are you involving High Street? We all live on High Street. I've talked to all of the neighbors on High Street. Nobody has an issue with it. There is no parking issue on High Street. And furthermore, if they're just talking about a few minutes a day during the school year, why is it 24/7, 365 days a year? That you are prohibiting us from parking in front of our houses? I, I don't understand that.
So there are more than just your neighbors that it impacts. It impacts everybody who travels that, and if it were a time period, how would we regulate that?
Well, you have a sign up there, right now, that says, "No left turns" between 7:30 or whatever, 3:30, up at the top of, in the entrance of the school. You have times there. I mean, you can put times on any sign. You can say, "No parking between 2:30 and 3:30 school days." To ban parking totally, to me, is just an infringement on our rights to have access to our property and to have parking. I mean, you know, when my daughter comes, and we have a couple of people in our driveway with her two kids, she has to park, guard near a block away and lug all her stuff in, her kids and whatnot, and, and to get to our house. I mean, that's not fair. And, and I guess I just don't understand the rationale of the total parking ban on High Street.
I don't know, is it says the entire High Street?
Oh, no, it's, well, our, our section of High Street, from Church Street to School Street and 200 feet beyond. I, I, I don't understand that there is no parking issue on High Street. Nobody parks on High Street to access the school.
My business is similar. It's in the morning at 7:35, there's people dropping off. But in general, there isn't any cars parked up there. Usually, like, you might have guests, so, like, not very often. Yeah, like he said, family, family member, like, not like a party or anything. And occasionally, there's kids dropping off, then we are to, or so that parents can get in and out with their babies. In general, all day, there isn't any traffic really at all on the street. It's like, it's a little tiny neighborhood.
Right, my worry is, we don't have a problem. If we do this, we may be introducing a problem. Like, we don't know what the effect is going to be of this. I mean, if it really is a problem where some people apply to school, as Dick said, you know, maybe we just limit it during the times when kids are coming and going, that say, "Don't," you can't park at that people, that would make more sense versus a universal ban.
You might get if you ban parking, that some people, they can't stop there. You might get people trying to grab each other and then circle the block while kids are trying to walk.
They'll, they'll, yeah, they'll be something, they'll be, like, introduce something else, I'm sure.
I mean, that's what's gonna happen, is that you're just gonna introduce a bunch of cars that circle the block, and, and then you are gonna have trouble with kids crossing the street and whatnot. You know, right now, when school closes, and you have all these cars coming up there, they're not parking. I mean, they're inching along, they're not parking.
No, they're parking.
They're only by High Street, they're not.
They're parking because you
They're not on High Street.
Okay, wait, one at a time.
My concern is High Street. They are not parking on High Street. And it would make no sense to even park on the west side of High Street, because that's facing the wrong way. But they're not gonna do that. If, if, if you have a problem with kids crossing, the school can have crossing guards. A lot of schools have crossing guards, and they take care of their own problems. I mean, you're, you're taking a problem that's essentially the school's.
No, that is a town problem, I'm sorry. I'm not gonna have you say it's a school problem, that's a town problem.
But, but it's
They are town residents.
Accessing the school. The school can hire the crossing guards. You know, they can stagger, like you say, the pimped-out signs, however. And you can put specific times on the signs as to when you're ready to regulate parking.
The residents on High Street don't have a problem. I just want, when the school is dismissing, the cars that are on High Street are waiting for the kids to walk down to the school, they're not there, like
I do know that.
They're not, that's not actually parked, they're there for like 10 minutes, waiting for a child.
What do you guys have to say?
Well, I just, I'm questioning, wasn't this brought before the planning committee?
It was.
And so I guess I'm wondering why those things weren't hammered out there and then brought to us? But we didn't get those change, I mean, we got changes.
Tom was, was going to bring you the changes.
Oh, he did? Right, but I
And while what we, what the planning commission agreed on was 200 feet either side of School Street during school hours. That's what the planning commission agreed on, and to me, that's reasonable. You know, if, if you do, like, you're only going 200 feet north on High Street. That's reasonable. You can come 200 feet south on High Street from School Street. But during school hours, or during it when it's a problem. And basically, at that time, there'll only be parking along the guardrail anyways, which would, you know, interfere with anybody. So I mean, that, that's what the planning commission determined.
So you're thinking more like coming down School Street, you come down School Street either way, either direction on High, 200 feet out is where they
Well, from either direction, north and south from High Street.
Okay.
But, but limited to, I mean, I don't understand the total parking ban, first of all. I mean, that makes no sense, you know, why would we have a parking ban during the summer? No sense whatsoever. I mean, we have neighbors that, you know, they have lawn service. They come with their big trucks and their trailers, they gotta park everywhere. You know, at this point, it would be illegal for the oil company to come and fill up my oil tank, because he's gonna be parking, giving out his vehicle. Is that, is, is an overzealous sheriff's deputy gonna give him a ticket?
There's a difference between parking and sitting, if you read the ordinance. It is the same.
On High Street, well, first of all, there is no definition of parking. Standing, whatever. For High Street and for this, it says, "No parking." When you talk about sidewalks and parks, where you say, "No standing, no idling," or whatever. This is null parking. Okay, so when a truck pulls up in front of my house, stops his motor, gets out, and does his delivery, he is parked. And an overzealous policeman could give him a ticket.
So, here, here's what Judy's getting at, though. This was sent to the planning commission. The planning commission didn't wanna touch it. It got sent back to the, whoa, 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 it got sent back to us. We did it, then it got sent to the planning commission again, and then you touched it. So I think that's her question, why in the first place did you not make the changes?
Because the planning, because I came in in February of '20 to complain, and you rescinded it. At that time, you said you were going back to the drawing board, and that you would consult with the planning commission, which you did, and we gave you our response. And so that was the order of things. We were never invited to discuss this prior to February of '20.
Yes, you were.
The planning, you showed me anywhere in the minutes or anywhere that you contacted me prior to you adopting the first ordinance. We were not contacted. Regardless, that ordinance, that ordinance was rescinded. The planning commission discussed it. We gave you our thoughts about it. And this is what we're discussing tonight.
I, 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 we don't wanna fight over this, okay?
I'm not fighting that.
Yes, you are, Dick, yes, you are.
You know, you
Okay. But let's hear your opinions, and
I'm giving you my opinion, Tom.
Okay. But let's, let's do it nicely.
You know, perhaps Tom didn't express it well enough as a representative of the planning.
It should've come back in paper form.
It was in the minutes.
I guess my question is, no, it's a question. I feel like initially, when we, we did this, and then people were concerned about what was said in it, we put it on hold, we tried to rewrite it and redo it, so I guess, and I don't wanna be like a bad seed here, but I feel like the reason we did this is to listen to what you had to say and to fix it. And I don't feel like, right now, like, we fixed it. So I feel like we're back to square one, where we were last February.
I'll tell you what, you know how you fix it? Just remove all references to our part of High Street.
From what point on?
From, from school, from Church Street to School Street.
That doesn't resolve the problem.
Well, then go 200 feet north. Or, or just do it during school hours. I mean, we understand that if there's a school issue, and there's a safety issue, that's fine. But there is no safety issue except between a quarter to three and 3:15 school days. So 80, 80% of the year, 90, 95% of the year, there is no issue. But now you're taking away our parking 100% of the time. And to me, that makes absolutely no sense.
It makes no sense on my side of the street, I'm the resident of the apartment here at the school, there's literally no traffic.
But we've heard complaints about your side of the street, so that's why we're asking you to come around the other way. That's our resolve to that. Which we're not here to discuss that. That's why we're doing it, to go around. So all your cars are parking the way it should be, and that, that's why we decided on that part of High Street.
I just, it's ridiculous to have a whole street who's parking.
It's not the whole street. So what else would you guys like to?
Well, I think it needs to be clarified, too, like, you said there's no difference between parking and, I don't understand it, and I think we interpret it as there is a difference. Like, parking is, you, you park a car and it's there all day long. Whereas if UPS pulls up, they can do that, 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 they're not banned from doing that.
But then that needs to be defined. In your ordinance, does that define park, does that define standing? Does that define?
Right, and I thought it did at one point.
But I, but I will say that Vermont statute does define that, and that's what controls this. Is that standing is, is a different thing than parking, so if you're stopping for a delivery, or if you're stopping for someone to grab, that is standing, that is different.
Okay.
So I guess my question, my question is, is that what, would this be resolved or remedied if we just said, you know, there is parking on one side of the street, other than winter parking, which is
Well, winter parking ban is fine, though.
Right, right, because I'm sure there's not gonna be 50 cars up and down High Street on any given day parked there. So I guess, I mean, personally, I'm fine with it, because I mean, I grew up here, we parked on streets all the time. So I'm fine with, you know, having regulations on School Street, definitely. And I, my concern is just like over that goal, you know, like, too many cars parked, you know?
Well, nobody parks there.
Right.
Nobody parks there.
It's more down in the section, kind of.
I mean, you're, even in the dark, you have a huge spotlight right there anyway.
Right.
It's very dim.
I mean, that's my, that's just my input, for what it's worth.
And, and just living it during school hours, dear?
Thank you for raising your hand.
I'm, I'm new in town, not, not from around here. And, and maybe as sort of still an outsider in community. I have to say that, that looking at this, it seems like a, a classic example of swatting fly or switching. Indicus has put forth a couple of really reasonable targeted proposals that should absolutely solve this problem, they would help bring that, just a tremendous burden on a lot of people who just want to live on their lives. And, and I have to say, looking at the ordinance as it's written right now, it would not affect me. Okay, I'm just a little like, but still, just looking at it from a, from a neighbor's perspective, it seems like this is way, way beyond what it's half. And if one clarified the ordinance in, in the manner that Dick suggests, there wouldn't be a need for more definitions of parking and standing and idling and all that sort of stuff. Nobody's on the curb or at the curb between this time and that time on certain days. I mean, why can't you just, just agree on, on doing something really simple?
Because it's not as simple as that. It, it isn't, because then you have this section of town you can't, this section of town you can. It's not as clear to the sheriff, which is already, it's a lot. I mean, how many people have gotten a ticket for parking in this town? Zero. So
I mean
What's your, okay, so that's one at a time?
Let it just be fun. There are towns smaller than this that have no parking areas in part of the town, that have no parking areas in other parts of the town. It, it, it's not a difficult thing to do. A few signs, as Dick says, with the, with the time and, and just no parking this time, that should solve the problem. Without ruffling anybody's feathers, or making life more difficult for anybody that's, that's already here. It seems like that, that opportunity to really just make a targeted difference rather than painting with a broad brush.
Could you live with school days? Under 80 days a year?
I can live with school days during the hours, and that's an issue, yeah.
Well, what about just school days? That would give you holidays, weekends?
That, that would certainly be better. But, but I don't want, and, and also, I mean, I don't want the community cluttered with no parking signs. I mean, quite frankly, the only time people park on High Street to any extent are townwide yard sale, which is a Procter Town event, and when the Union Church does one of their big bazaars. That's the only time that there is extensive parking on High Street, and those are community events. And me, to drive out there, look for a parking space, and see no parking signs, to me, is not a welcoming thing to the town of Procter.
I think if the residents, most of the residents on High Street are telling me that they don't want it, and it's not a problem, the town should help with this.
I mean, I've, I've spoken to every resident
Okay.
on our part of High Street, and none of them are agreeable.
We're, we're just kind of repeating now, so what's your, what would you guys like to do?
You know, we're told rainy days are a big issue. It does wind up on High Street.
It's School Street, but
Oh, sorry, School Street is every day, every day. Rainy days, they say it backs up. You know, because a lot of mothers come up.
Whoa, 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 no, timeout, one at a time, you have to, please, go ahead.
The sheriff been called about this issue, I see, and he's given a report to the board about the issue. Members or residents that live on High Street have called in, right, and filed a report?
So the sheriff knows our issues. The sheriff's only thing is there, according to the parking ordinance, there's, there's nothing that they're gonna do. And I'm really okay, I think it's just a safety aspect on that street, and and, and that's why there are other streets, it's not just High Street that there's no parking on. And, and so, you know, and that's, that's the number one thing, the aspect of, can a fire truck get through there? So as you're, you know, you're having your company, that's great and fine, but can a fire truck get through to your neighbor? And, 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 and it is a safety issue at school time, which we are working with school, and I absolutely refuse to look at it as school and town. Because every kid that goes to that school, their parents live in this town, and they pay taxes. So this is not a school-town problem, this is a mutual problem, and I just, I wanna make sure that we're looking at it like that. It is, it is high time, that it's not that. Just because the school has changed the way they district doesn't mean that it's still not our responsibility. And it's still not our kids and our, you know, taxpayers using that. So, you know, we're still working with school on that. You know, I do have conversations with Christie on that, and I guess it's just up to the board how they want to proceed with this section. I mean, I think it's really okay, too, I like the one side. Because that seems to be an issue, too, like, a lot of times, the car is parked on this side of the road, facing that way, and, and that's, and the kids are crossing here, doors are opening, there's people at this sign, people come in here. So I do like that suggestion, that school and parking all one way, which would alleviate, if you want anybody to come over, they, they can park as long as they're parking on that side.
Which would be the west side, I was gonna say.
Yes.
The parents do a pretty good job of staying over on the guardrail on the High Street.
I understand that.
They're just sitting very still on the school street side, and a fire truck absolutely could come out
It, it's not just the fire truck.
Go around, go around the whole line, and go down the other way. They do, the school has done very good about making sure we come around in one direction, and the fire truck absolutely
It, it's not just that. It's the, it's, it's the congestion at that time, and the people park this way on the wrong side of the street, and the kids coming across, and people coming this way, and people coming this way. This is a really kind of a dangerous intersection, in my opinion.
Well, then the sheriffs need to deal with that.
And I didn't know there was a High Street resident that had called to complain about this.
It's more than just a High Street resident. So it's both. It's not just a High Street resident. So what would you guys like to do? What do you think?
I think that 200 feet concept probably would work.
If we put up a sign that 200 feet each way, the sheriff would be able to tell.
And I would request that you just would just do it on School Day. I mean, there, there's this handicap woman that recently bought a house house. I don't know what her needs are in and out of that. You know, and, and ambulance and fire trucks, I mean, we've had a number of ambulances. We're an older neighborhood, we had a number of ambulance up there, and they've never had trouble getting through High Street.
Okay, back to this. So here's my little issue with during school days. You, so what's the sheriff gonna call up the school, hey, is there school today?
They say Monday through Friday.
Is that, but that's, but school, it's not during the summer, so in the summer, so, see what I'm saying? You're
You have signs, you put the dates, just like it says, 7:30, 3:30. It can say September 1st through, you know, June 15th, or something like that.
And it's Friday, yeah.
Yeah, well, but I mean, you have, you have to
Or would just, just say when school is in session between 7:30, 3 o'clock.
Well, I'm saying, how do you know if school's in session?
Well, most people would assume
If the sheriffs don't know when the school is in session, they are not doing their job.
That's, that's such a totally other subject.
And I have gone to the sheriff's logs for the past several months at the end of the school year and whatnot. There's nothing, one call that the sheriffs replied to for a traffic issue.
All right, so back to, this is what we're saying. I, I'm not gonna keep rehashing this. It, it is, it's 6:30 now, we spent a half an hour hashing this out. So let's talk about what it is we're gonna do, so we can move on with this.
Well, as long as there's nothing else wrong with the ordinance that anybody sees, or do you have a question about the, anything?
This town, and a lot of people feel really strongly about, they really appreciate their rights they have right now to deal with the park. It seems like some type of agreement, even if you have to make a special sign for a time, could be the order. And they would probably be really happy. I'm out of your feeling, I'm out of it, but
Okay. So, so I say we amend the ordinance to go back to the suggestion from the planning commission for the 200 feet out, and that parking is allowed, other than during school hours.
And, and I would go a step further, to make it as easy as possible from, during school hours from August 20th until June 15th.
Agreed. I think it needs to be clear, anyway.
I mean, the sheriff was asking at one point for GPS coordinates for
Right.
for speed limits, so let's be crystal clear as to what the dates are. And that'll be pretty clear.
And, and it's certainly possible for the school to send announcements to the parents that say
Agreed. And, and we're, we're working on it with the school, and the school's not gonna get overly involved in the parking ordinance. They're just going to try to move the They're just going to try to move the traffic, from what I've understanding, try to help the town in not having that bottleneck there. Or, and not having, there's, there's another issue up there, too, and.
About non-loying trusts? What are your trusts?
No, that's the, that's what we're, we're not making a sign with this big of exceptions. It's just gonna say this. Correct. Correct, during that time, for two hundred feet. Correct. That he would have to park somewhere else during that time.
I mean, if you go to read it right, you're talking about two hundred feet south, two hundred feet north. School minutes.
Correct.
I can agree with that.
From, from September first to June fifteenth.
Whatever.
From, so it's from the west side of School Street. So.
So you're from School Street, two hundred feet north and two hundred feet south. You would put a sign up that would basically say, no parking from here to the corner of School Minutes. Fine.
During, from seven thirty to three thirty.
Fine.
Okay. Got all that?
Yeah.
All right, just so, let me just clarify, too, as far as like the deliveries and stuff like that, they, we're not gonna make a UPS guy park, you know, three miles down the road to deliver a package.
I don't think they all come to the end of the whole spike that one.
Right. So they can park there, because it's not for parks.
And the sheriff has already said that. They're not gonna hand out tickets for delivery drivers and.
And again, the last time I looked at Vermont's hatchings. Standing is very different, standing is when a delivery truck stops.
Correct.
North street, the two hundred feet.
So you and I will get together and do this.
So what's your timeframe on this?
Well, it's gotta go through the whole process, because we had to start over.
I realize.
So it's, if it gets adopted tonight, that's sixty days?
Well, I know, I know that, but are you, your timeframe? I know it's a statutory timeframe, but are you gonna adopt this tonight?
I'm hoping to adopt this tonight with these changes.
There's one technical thing, if you are, right now you have a current parking ordinance, you have a current traffic ordinance. This appears to combine the two, and there is already a Section Seven, which, this is section. The way it was written on the town website, Article Seven on the top. On the parking or the traffic ordinance, there already is an Article Seven on the existing. So that would be a common, that means just a title that means you have that draft.
The new ordinance is edited, you get the articles with the right numbers.
But right now, they're not.
Correct.
They're not, I mean, just the ordinance on the website, that's bad shit.
Oh, that's, I'm just pointing it out, and I don't want just to run into a technical issue.
Awesome, thank you. Thank you. All right, so, anything else on this parking ordinance? Beautiful.
Thank you very much.
So much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's good to see people back at meetings again. I'm like, yes, people. Okay, other than that, is there any other open public comments? Guests? Good stuff. I have a good stuff. Sunday, the pool had ninety guests. Ninety. I think that's the biggest number in some time, so that's pretty exciting. Anyone else with good stuff? Sweet. Okay, traffic and parking ordinance adoption. Do you guys want to wait until the next meeting to have the new wording before we adopt, so we can look at it?
I, I think it's a bad idea to adopt it without the new verbiage.
I am good with that. Everybody else okay with that?
How long does it take to become effective after that?
Is it thirty or sixty?
Sixty days.
Sixty.
Sixty days, okay.
It allows someone to file a petition to take it to a special town meeting, although they may have taken care of that.
So we'll run into the start of school, but we can look at that.
Yes, I think it'd be all right. Okay, so under Highway, any other new or old business? What do we got, Stan, anything?
I've got nothing.
Great. Great. Thank you. We're kind of moving through fast so that we can go through this and do our executive session. So Board of Water Commission, any other new or old business? Oh, yes, we have to go in and out, I'm sorry.
Move into the Board of Water Commissioners, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, Board of Water Commissioners, any new or old business?
When are we gonna start turning off? It's July.
The notices went in the mail today.
Today?
The top ten.
I thought they were going in the first of the month.
They went in the mail today, the top ten.
Okay.
They got thirty days to come in and make an agreement, pay up, make an agreement, and then we would be shutting them off.
So today is the twelfth. August thirteenth, we can start turning off, correct? I'm holding to that, Stanley.
August twelfth is thirty days.
Yeah, so August thirteenth, we can turn off.
I wanna give them the date. An extra here, because they'll be saying something.
Okay.
August thirteenth.
Anyone else for water? I'll accept a motion to go out of water and into sewer.
Second.
All in favor? Anyone opposed? Any new or old business?
The only thing I have is signature pages for the Vermont municipal bond bank for your bonds. So before anybody leaves, you approved it two meetings ago, I got the signature pages.
Okay. Let's put them right here, so I'll remember. Okay, I will accept a motion to move out of, for sewage into, back into the regular meeting.
I'm open, second.
All in favor? Anyone opposed? Great. All right, so everybody, Bruce still hasn't, but reviewed the bills and signed the Select Board Agenda, orders equalling forty-eight thousand, four hundred and seventy-one dollars and fifty-nine cents. Then we have the local hazard mitigation plan from the Rutland Regional Planning Commission, the agreements.
They're for your approval and signature. One change has been made, which is adding a representative of the school district to the planning team.
Correct. And you made that change, correct?
Not yet. Can you hear, I've asked Stephanie to make the change in her original.
Okay. Do you want to sign this tonight, or do you guys want to wait until the name has been added to sign?
It's kind of formally, I'll sign tonight.
Okay.
Sure.
So we'll sign at the.
I think we all sign it, do we? I think it's just you signing it.
Is it just me signing it? Yep, it's just me signing it.
You or Stan?
I'll put that right there. Okay. The ARPA certification, that was done by Celia. Does anybody have any question on that?
Did we schedule a meeting for that, Stan, for the town?
We need to have a public meeting at some point, but I think the discussion, a couple meetings ago, with board coming up with its list, and then opening it up for the public.
Right, which I thought we did.
Yeah, we already did that.
We did that quite a while. The sewer really can't be on that, because it's not enough money, correct? I don't think it qualifies.
It, but does it have to pay for the whole thing?
Are you sure? It keeps changing.
Like, if it's gonna cost us three hundred thousand and we're gonna get a hundred thousand, we can apply that to it.
Yeah.
Right, so.
The ordinance you're not using it for the two state bond that you're doing it.
Right.
Exactly, exactly.
All right, so.
I've got fifty thousand dollars worth of equipment.
Yes, he does have some equipment, so when would you guys like to have that public meeting?
August.
Can we do it at the next select board meeting, the next regular meeting?
Oh, yeah, well, you've got quite a bit of time to submit your, your wish list.
Right, but I would like to, to do this since we're getting a new town manager, you're going on vacation, so let's make.
I don't know, do you need, do you need more time for a public meeting, for that purpose?
Not a public meeting, Karen, yes.
A public meeting, so then, let's, let's do the ARPA public meeting at the next select board meeting, which is July twenty-sixth?
Twenty-sixth.
I can't believe I pulled that out. Is everybody okay with that?
Fine, sure.
Excellent. So seven twenty-six, and we'll just do it right at the beginning of the meeting, six PM? Okay. So moving on to park and rep committee appointments, we have requests from Robert and Angela Ober to join the rep committee. The rec board.
Both are approved.
Seconded. All in favor?
All right.
Anyone opposed? Welcome, Robert and Angela to the rec board. Okay, zoning administrator. So we have an applicant for the zoning administrator, which I'd like to recommend that we go back to town employee. And because then.
Executive session.
Executive session, that.
I didn't know if that's what you were referring.
No, because currently, the zoning administrator, we contracted somebody, and so they had to have a liability insurance. I would like to see, send as a town person going back to a town, and then the town would have that liability insurance, because it wouldn't be financially responsible for him to get paid this much and pay out this much, because this isn't really his business. It was a business before. So I'm recommending to the board that we go back to the zoning administrator, or making the zoning administrator a town employee, which he knows that there would be no benefits, because it's as needed.
Well, is that, isn't there, is our health officer the same way?
Health officer is a stipend.
Yeah.
Well, the health officer is a state, appointed by the state.
Okay, so I'm just, I'm just talking insurance-wise. So it's not the same.
Wasn't there a town that had a problem, and they got rid of the problem by paying a stipend to the person? Like, you know, twenty-five or fifty dollars, and that was made him a town employee, so to speak. I think that came up in something with the, I'm trying to think, with the regional planning. They, they took care of that problem by paying him, you know, twenty-five or fifty dollars stipend, and that qualified him.
In the past, the zoning administrator has been a town employee before.
No, Bob Cromes was zoning administrator for a number of years. He took the fees. He paid all of the expenses and took the fees. The only thing he were paying out of that, out of the town budget, was his social security, which we had our share of the social security.
So he, he didn't, he didn't have insurance?
No.
He was covered under town?
I mean, he was, you know, under the town, but he was, the checks came from the town that paid, but it was fees. I think the decision that was made when we went to a contract would be an hourly rate basis. I think what Karen is talking about is putting on the payroll and with no benefits against the part-time job, covers the whole situation.
And only paid when they're doing the job?
Yeah, I'll turn in a timesheet, just like everybody else, the other employee does.
Okay.
The, the job description is, you know, one, one planning commission meeting per month, so there's, there's a couple hours right there. But when we only see ten or twelve permits during a year, and it only takes them, you know, an hour or two to take care of.
Right.
Last year, we paid Erica a thousand dollars for the whole year.
She was on that same basis?
She was on a contract basis.
Right. But she was only paid, she was paid a flat rate?
Flat, no, per hour rate, five dollars.
So same thing?
Yeah.
Okay.
Same way we do with the, with the list of the assessor.
Right.
Hourly rate.
Okay.
The zoning administrator attends every planning commission meeting and is part of the planning commission. I think they should, at least the chairman of the planning commission should be involved.
He was.
Be okay there?
Yes. Yes, we, we emailed, it was Stan, Dick and I, and Dick did not have a problem.
No, you didn't raise any objections.
Correct. We absolutely did do that.
What's the hourly rate?
What do you want, it has?
Hourly rate?
Yes.
Well, I mean, should we talk about this as an executive session, or?
Okay.
I mean, it's, it's a town, it's a town. Right, it's everybody's.
I'm just checking, I'm.
No, it's fine, we can set the rate.
Well, I think, I mean, we haven't even talked about hiring them, or.
Well.
I mean, this is the first week, God, you know what I mean? So I don't know if you want to talk about that, I want to just go with the only outfit we have.
We can do it however, you guys, please, but rate is public. We can go into the executive session and then make an announcement after about rate.
I'm fine.
I, I don't, I don't have any objection to how you guys want to roll with it.
And the planning commission was okay with this individual?
Yes. So we'll, we'll put that as part of the executive session at the end.
I'd like to get an hourly rate from him for being a contractor and being a town employee.
Okay. Well, being a contractor, he would need to, that's the problem, the liability insurance is really high for what we're asking.
Erica didn't charge us that much.
But she was a business, so she already had that insurance. He would have to go purchase that insurance. And he looked into purchasing that insurance, which made it not feasible for him to do this, because it would be more than what he would be paying.
More expensive, yeah.
Well, I say whether it's him or anybody else should obviously be covered under our insurance, because nobody's gonna be able, as a solo person, to afford liability insurance.
That's what.
Okay, how about an hourly rate?
Okay, so let's, how many permits do we have sitting, waiting for somebody to go do it? Did you do them?
We have one permit meeting, we have two complaints, one complaint week for zoning administrator.
So when we have the special meeting on the nineteenth, can we discuss the zoning administrator? Can we have that hook of a turnaround? Can we, like, we're discussing wage? Okay, we can reach out to this person and find their wage?
The current. In thirty days after filing the application with the favor of the team, which has been done, it automatically is approved.
Okay.
This, this is not a difficult permit to do.
Okay.
This is shed on the lot, this has all the setbacks in the world, it's an easy yes.
Okay, so if we're, if we're approving him and we know the rate, why can't we just approve it tonight? Well, that's what I'm thinking. It's just the, the rate.
Yeah, I would think.
That somebody has problems.
I thought Erica was gonna continue until we got somebody.
No, she will continue, she said she would continue to come to meetings and take good, but she didn't want to do the quote permitting process.
Okay. Okay, let's move forward then.
I mean, what do you guys think? Do you think twenty an hour? Eighteen an hour?
Well, let's, what do our road people get paid? Well, let's, uh, what do our road people get paid? Not twenty an hour, I don't believe.
They're just under, they're eighteen something.
So eighteen?
Yes.
Fifteen, he's part-time.
Well, we kind of do need somebody to do it, though, you have to make it where somebody's wild as well.
Yeah, but we got people that have been here how many years?
But you can't base it like that, because that's not how wages are based. I mean.
Well, you said this is a part-time job for them.
What are you guessing, Stan, like, tops?
You know, we got guys who call in for super breaks.
Five hours a month?
If it's that.
Yeah.
Probably most, they say, two hours are automatic.
And a half hours.
Right.
Because the zoning administrator doesn't admit it at all. Other than that, it's time to do a permit, to review it, look at the ordinance, look at the setbacks, be sure that it complies with everything. If it does, it's approved, if it's not, it's denied, and then goes to the four variants, which goes back to the board again.
I'd like to give him fifteen for a probationary period, at least, yeah, this works out. We do that when we hire our road employees.
Not at fifteen, no, we're not hiring a vet right now.
I would say twenty dollars, he's gotta come to planning commission meetings.
Some of our road guys don't get paid that.
It's not the same as a road, he has to.
It's not, these guys go on snowy nights, all night, they go on super breaks.
Yes, but.
Wait around when people sue.
Knowing zoning, knowing.
He doesn't, he doesn't know any of it. That's why you should be on probation for a while here, we can wind up in court over some of these. If it's, uh, the permit's decided wrong.
How about seventeen?
Do you want to split the difference between seventeen? I could live with that, and a probationary period. Oh, six months?
Well, I think it's hard to put a probationary period on such a.
Yeah.
On call. They, I mean, he could have two things in six months, so putting a probationary period on it is kind of.
I, I, you know, but I don't want to wind up in court, because.
I don't think we're gonna wind up in court.
Well, Stan, most often too, some of the stuff that he's dealing with, he's gonna run by you, right, too, and stuff?
And the planning commission.
By Dick.
Yeah, okay, running it by.
If it were run by, shared with the planning commission, not by me.
If he's gonna run it by Dick first.
What I would recommend is to be run by.
But that wasn't the way it was in the past, but.
Well, and he's new to that, so I think that, that's, so. Um, we need a motion for hiring in at the rate. So moves. What are you moving? We're hiring Mr. Ober at seven dollars an hour for the zoning administrative position for the town.
Yeah.
And, I mean, just to clarify, I think maybe alleviate Tom's concerns, especially a part-time employee serves at the pleasure of the board. If there was an issue, we could, I mean, there's not a contractual obligation to continue.
Right.
So.
Correct.
So I'll second that motion.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Perfect, thank you. Animal control ordinance, we have a letter from a resident wanting to add cats to our animal control ordinance.
I make a motion we not add cats to it.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Um, I think this is, for our information, this is the Market on West Street Tax Stabilization Agreement, and I do want to repeat that Ben has recused himself from this discussion.
Thank you.
And there's a letter from Alan with it.
Yeah.
And I would actually like to leave the room, just to.
Absolutely.
Essentially, what Alan was saying is the agreement is terminated.
Right.
And we, and we can go back and.
And collect.
Be, like, the three years that are done, plus the eighteen percentage. It would go out as a separate bill for the back end, because it's too late to get it into the current.
Right.
But it would be a lien on the property to cover.
Okay.
Because what Alan is talking about.
Okay, is somebody trying to get in, because somebody's calling the office, I just want to make sure.
Nobody's trying to get in.
Okay.
Keith Whitcomb is your reporter.
Yes, I'm just, because somebody's calling, I'm making sure nobody's trying to, like, join. Sometimes that's the case.
We ever, we ever get a dollar?
I didn't. I'll definitely figure it out. Because it goes a percentage for five-year period.
I didn't know if they already helped or they didn't.
Not that I know of.
What would you guys like to do?
Stan, Celia hasn't calculated this out, what they owe, has she?
Maybe.
Has Celia calculated what they owe?
No.
Do you guys want to put it on the next agenda with what it would be, or, or do you want to just make a, no? Okay, I'm good.
I don't, I just want to make a decision.
We've stated it is terminated.
It is terminated.
Yeah.
Before, following up on Alan's letter, is that, yeah.
Right.
We need to figure out.
Okay.
What, what her invoice is gonna be. That would be the lien amount, it's, it's for the lien.
All right, so, what's the pleasure of the board?
Well, it is terminated.
Yeah, you know, we have a legal contract with them, so they signed off on.
So we would like to proceed?
I would.
Collecting what needs to, okay, so, does somebody want to make a motion to that?
I didn't, somebody seconded.
I seconded, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Somebody verbalize what that motion said.
No. The motion is that we, um, that, what I understand, because what I just said is that we, the contract is null and void, and that we, what was the word I used?
You should say that you're putting a lien on the property.
Correct.
That, that's what the motion should say.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, so let's make that motion.
Make, well, we made the motion that the agreement, uh, for tax stabilization was terminated.
Correct.
And we will be sending an invoice and placing a lien on the market.
All right, anybody want to second that?
Is that good?
Yes.
Second. Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Sweet.
My horn to Ben.
Sheriff report, anybody have any questions? Uh, I, I'm still, just, and FYI, I'm still not happy that there's only six tickets. When we have specifically asked him, and speeding is a problem in town, we have specifically asked, twice now, this would be the third time.
They moved this number?
They did.
Yeah.
I've seen it from people over, but I don't have to say I got tickets, but I've seen it several times.
Yeah, it's six tickets, zero warnings. So I would like to see that number higher, Sam, will you please, uh, touch base with them?
I'll email today, we expect to see at least fifteen next.
Yes, absolutely, yes.
Not driving through town, fifteen of them. I don't think six is bad for a town our size.
I think two-week period. I think it's, it's, especially the amount of speeding that's going on, I think it's, no, I think it needs to be a bit higher. I think people need to get the impression that they're, it's a presence, go ahead.
Will we still, like, vlog people?
Can we what? Vlogging, no, we do not vlog.
We're looking, we're looking for a vlogger.
Hey, yes, and you would just. You can only vlog under ten hours.
Independent contracts.
Not covered by insurance on that, wow.
All right, all right, is there any other new or old business for the board?
Yes, why, I, the difference between last year and this year's taxes. Look at the bottom, a hundred thousand dollar house, the town tax is a thousand bucks, last year it was a thousand seventy-one, now it's a thousand sixty-one. And the education tax was fifteen hundred, and now it's fourteen forty-five. Total went down about, uh, seventy dollars.
Wow, that's good, I'm good with that. All right, I'm good with that. All right, I will accept a motion to go into executive session for personnel, we will be interviewing.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?